Well, it looks like it's a little after six. So we'll go ahead and get started. And so I believe there are some additional agendas on the back table if anyone needs one. And does everyone up here have an agenda? Okay. So on the agenda, the first item is to call to order, welcome everyone, and take a roll call. All trustees are here except Heidi Kendall and Ann Wake. So we have a quorum.
Oh, and Willena.
Pardon? Oh, and Willena. Oh, Willena. She was planning on being here. So she might just be on her way because she was a yes earlier in the day. So with that, we will stand and say the pledge of allegiance. The flag moves around a little bit, but it's in the center. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you. And there she is. So now we have trustee old person, this person as well. And so that item number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. And are there any requests from anyone to amend the agenda or change the order? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and move through the agenda as it has been presented. So we have three sets of minutes to approve. The first are the board of trustees' regular meeting from September 24, 2019. Does anyone want to make a change to those minutes at all? Seeing no hands going up. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the September 24 meeting? Moved by trustee Newbold. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Lorenzen? I've only been pronouncing your name for a few years. I don't know. It's one of those nights. So all those in favor of approving the September 24, 2019 minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to the regular meeting minutes from October 8, 2019, that are found beginning on page 14. Are there any changes anyone would request to those minutes? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of October 8? Moved by trustee McDonald and seconded by trustee Smith. All those in favor of approving the minutes from October 8, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to the regular meeting minutes from October 22, 2019, which are found beginning on page 18. Is there any request to make a change to those minutes? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October 22 meeting? Moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee Service. All those in favor of approving the minutes from October 22, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we move on to item number five, which is public comment on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public who wants to bring something to either the board or the district's attention. And because it's not been listed as an agenda item, there won't be a discussion tonight. But if it warrants further discussion, we could add it in as an agenda item in the future. So we ask if anyone has a public comment on a non-agenda item, come to the podium and state your name. And if you have an unusual spelling of your name, just help us out with spelling it. And there's a little button to push. And we like people to keep their comments to about three minutes. So thanks.
Hi, yes. My name is Derek Hitt. That's H-I-T-T. I am the president of the Missoula CLC and representative of the carpenters' union. I just wanted to come here and thank you guys for helping promote the trades in the schools, also pushing apprenticeship with your guys' programs here with the schools. As you guys know, apprenticeship is one of the oldest ways of learning a trade throughout the world. They date back to, I believe, the Babylonians actually have a stone text of that. But that's me kind of rambling on that. Also, you guys know, in Montana, we've actually doubled the amount of apprentices in the last four years through all of the trades, whether it's carpenters, plumbers. I believe there's also a CNA apprenticeship now. And that is all part of the schools pushing towards a non-traditional route of apprenticeships. And I just wanted to thank you guys for that. And I know I have other people here that want to speak on that kind of language with you guys.
Thanks, Derek. Good evening, all. It is really good to see a room full of very familiar faces. My name is Heather Harp. And I'm a city councillor here in Missoula, representing Ward 3, but really throughout the entire city. And what Derek was just talking about is our registered apprenticeship utilization, which was truly a shift in policy at our city level. It was our efforts to address rising housing prices along with stalled wages in our community. And this resolution was an act to really try and start to put, it's not a fix, but it's a step in the right direction. And so what that means in terms of utilization is that any of our city projects that are going to be priced at over $500,000, it will basically give the opportunity to our contractors to come in and be able to present a project and get a 5% discount on their bid in terms of being competitive against other potential contractors. And what that bid preference does is if I'm a contractor that happens to have apprentices on staff that are going to work the project, I get to basically be more competitive with someone unlike Vicky McDonald, who might not have any apprentices on her staff. And so it's a way to kind of create an environment that really says to our young people and those who may not have other options in this world, or who are really thinking about what else is there for me, to be able to go into the trades and be able to have a real option in life. So what we did in this particular scenario, just so that you have an understanding, is that we didn't just come out with this idea all on ourselves. We had the labor unions approach us and say, hey, we've tried to do this in other communities throughout and in other states. And we said, that's a really good idea. However, I think what we also decided to do, which is a little different, is that we also considered the impact to those contractors that would be adversely affected. And so we had lots of private conversations with various different contracting firms here in Missoula. But then we also went to the Missoula Business Improvement Industry or Building Industry Association, so the MBIA, and spoke to them. We spoke to folks at the Missoula College, and we spoke also to Casey Durnberger of MCPS. And so in effect, we had this really great collaboration across all these sectors. And in the end, instead of creating a mandate, we created an incentive program that now is being hailed throughout the labor community as a model piece of legislation that hopefully will be implemented through other communities throughout the United States. So I just wanted to praise you of that. And if you have any questions, you know how to reach me. Thanks.
Good evening. Gwen Jones, City Council, Ward 3. And it is so much fun to come give public comment and then go home. And you guys have a really thick packet for tonight. But thanks for your service. I truly do appreciate it. I also worked with Heather Harp on the registered apprenticeship legislation. And I just wanted to bring a different topic to the public comment, which is the fact that what became clear as we worked through that process and educated ourselves on it is the fact that the culture has changed in our world around trades and people working in the trades. And frankly, it is not at the status that it should have in our culture these days when the reality is, working in the trades is a great way to earn a livable wage, have benefits, and have retirement, which is something that we talk about a lot on city council and having those kinds of jobs in our community. So the culture has changed over the last few decades for numerous different reasons, and it is very much permeated down into the high school level when kids are really making pivotal decisions as they're trying to decide what to do with their life. And anecdotally, as I've had two kids go through, they're in college now, and my youngest is at Hellgate, I have seen kids who there's kind of this, well, you either get a BA or you go into the service industry for minimum wage. And there's a lot more discussion, I think, about all of the in-betweens to those options. So I just think it's a community-wide discussion that we should be having. And it impacts not only their lives for people and kids who go into the trades, but it affects our housing prices, which affect all of us in this community. So it's a very complicated topic, but I think we need to have this community-wide discussion where we're talking about valuing the trades. And kudos to you guys for having Casey Durnberger, who is doing a great job in terms of registered apprentices, not just in trades, but much broader, of course. But what I've seen is, I think, MCPS has opened the door to having that conversation because you guys have the kids. And I think that the contractors and subcontractors and unions need to be talking with the kids and helping educate them as to their options. And I certainly, having had my kids for close to two decades at MCPS, understand that it is a fine balance because at times, MCPS is used as a marketing tool by entities out there. So I can understand the door closing, but I think it's kind of opened up a little bit in terms of this subject matter, which is very valuable, good for our community, good for the kids to be interacting like that. So keep cracking the door open and find that balance. And let's get these houses built. So thanks and have a great meeting tonight.
All right. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Kathy Rogers. I'm a recently retired pediatrician from the Missoula area. And this is something that I would love to bring forward on an agenda item in the future. But I'm working with the governor's office on the temporary ban currently on vaping. And I just wanted to bring a few bullet points and items. There has not been, it's gone to court, and the decision is still pending whether that will be upheld or not. We still are stating through CDC that we don't know what's caused the deaths, but we do have some pretty dramatic information that tells us that 27.5% of our high schoolers have vaped or are vaping, which is the highest number ever, higher than we ever had with cigarettes. There are a couple of things that I want to point out that may be helpful for everyone to know is that the current vaping, especially different brands of it, have as much as 5% nicotine in it. And it is driving depression and anxiety in our adolescents in a dramatic way, much more dramatic than you would see with conventional cigarettes. That the regulations are so loose that you can go into vaping shops in Washington State now and still get vaping products that are being sold with the vitamin E in it, which we are increasingly aware is part of what's caused the pneumonias and the deaths, but not the only reason. There is increasing evidence that there is both second and third-hand effect from the vaping vapors, so that they do affect the people in the area. We used to talk about that with secondhand smoke with conventional cigarettes. So it is my hope that I can come back to you with more information. We may hopefully have a verdict that will be helpful. But the concern is that the people who get most addicted are 14- and 15-year-olds because their brain seeks the nicotine. And if you use a Juul, it has 5% nicotine in it. And they're selling it easy enough that it can be hidden anywhere. And we are now seeing kids who are vaping all night long. They wake up to take hits. So there's a lot of data, and it's pretty well substantiated over the last two to four years of acquisition of information. And I would love to share more with you, but I wanted to just bring it to your attention. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Hello. My name is Ross Best. I'm a member of the general public. I haven't attended one of your meetings in several years. I did attend some for a while. And years ago, before I knew I had hearing loss and before I got hearing aids, I know that it was hard to hear things at your meetings. So I wanted to come tonight to get a sense of what your current situation is. It's clear to me that it's better now than it was five or 10 years ago. On the other hand, there are still problems. For people with fairly serious hearing loss but good hearing aids, there can be the problem that as you process the sound to boost people's voices, you're also increasing the sound of the ventilation system and the sound of people rustling papers and coughing and so forth. So part of my reason for being here tonight is to hear what you say and figure out how audible it is. Another is to get a sense of how well I can hear myself when I'm standing up here speaking. My hope is that in the near future, I'm going to be proposing some things to various governmental agencies in Missoula to encourage greater audibility at public meetings. Your setup so far seems to be better than what the city council has had for many years. On the other hand, I haven't been to the city council in the last several weeks. I understand they have some changes afoot. But there's always the problem of members of boards not speaking up and not speaking into the microphone. So I'll just mention, I had trouble hearing most of what the presiding officer was saying at this meeting. So I think that means the microphone needs to be closer to the mouth. So that's my general project here. I'll listen for a while longer before heading out. Thank you.
Thanks. And Mr. Best, could you, if there's no other public comment, would you mind turning the mic off up there so we won't be competing with it? Thank you so much. And any other public comment? Seeing none, then we'll go back to the items on the agenda. Item number six is our community connection. And tonight, we're going to hear about elementary librarians' update. And I see that Ray's going to introduce Mary. So take it away.
Good evening. I have the privilege of introducing Mary Grail, a teacher librarian from Chief Charlo. I have been an Elise guest. We have been meeting with the teacher librarians now for the past, oh, I'd say since June on a regular basis. And the librarians have decided that they would love to come speak at a board meeting to share the wonderful things that are happening in our libraries. And so I'm going to let Mary take it away, and I'm going to play Vanna.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray, for that nice introduction. Hi, I'm Mary Grail. And I'm very excited to be here with you. And oops, that just got worse. I wanted to make sure that, I was wondering how this would work. I have a presentation here tonight, and I'll try to make this brief. Thank you so much for letting us come. The librarians would periodically like to come and just say hello to the board and talk about all the things that they do in the district. And Ray, if you could go to the first slide. When we think of school libraries, a lot of times when I say that I'm the librarian, people say, oh, the library is magical. It's wonderful. And I always say, yes, yes, it is. And it's a place where everyone is welcome. And then they also provide equitable resources for all, brings people and information together, and allows students to choose the best parts of reading material. And it also supports each school's different, unique learning needs. From the elementary perspective, we have nine elementaries in Missoula, and we all have a little bit different school philosophies of how we run things. Ray? The magical place. We like to think of the library as the heart of the school. Again, it's a place where all kids can come and find that special time. Maybe it's a little quiet time to do a little reading, and maybe you just need a little rest in your day. We like to make sure that all the kids feel comfortable when they come to the library. I always get the, oh, my library was so scary when I was a kid and I went to the library. We don't want that. We want it to be a fun and friendly place. Even with crazy cat ladies, yes. Ray, next slide? Thank you. Equitable resources for all. Our school libraries do a great job of literally putting thousands of pieces of material in people's hands, whether it's books, whether it's audio, audio resources. We, just at my library alone, we had a new reading program last year, a language arts program. And just at my school alone, I unpacked 53 boxes of materials. And this is hundreds of books going to each classroom for the kids to read in our reading program. And it just is a huge amount of information that's being put out. And I'm not sure that the community is just aware of how much your community libraries, all the material that they put out. The librarians, seven out of nine of the elementary libraries are doing what's called the children's choice. And the children's choice program is where book publishers give us approximately $50,000 worth of books, and they ask us to look at them and have the kids vote on these books. And if you look at this slide, these are actually, Ray, would you go to the next one? Thank you. These are actually first graders that are voting on the computers at school. On my school webpage, the library page, there's a little icon where the kids can click on it, and then they themselves can go in and vote. And that's what they do. The schools have done this now. This is our third year. And by the end of this year, we should raise anywhere between $15,000 to $25,000 worth of materials for each individual library. Brings people all together, that's true. It brings them into one place, not only students but staff. We have a lot of outside community members that we invite into our school. And there's our staff meeting in the library. We have volunteers from the Aging Service that come in and work with kids. They're fabulous. They're awesome volunteers. If you have a project and need volunteers, reach out to the Missoula Aging Service. We have volunteers, student reading groups. The library is used throughout the day. I have library classes, but then there's that open space, that open time, which is awesome for everyone to come in and use. We had some Big Sky students, future farmers, come in and visit us, and they had an awesome program. These kids came in, they were sharply dressed, they looked really nice in their uniforms, and they did a super job presenting to the kids about the agricultural programs that they have out just here at the Big Sky School. It was really great. Students, of course, love the best thing about the libraries, they get to pick their own materials and read. Free time reading in the library is, that's that part of that magic that I was talking about a little bit earlier. Sharing a book with a friend, it's just the best. I don't know what else to say for it. It's something they need and should have time to do. The learning support, the learning outcomes, sorry, I'm a little excited here to be here tonight. We have a little program in our school. It's STEAM. And we focus on science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And we have a few, I have a few cohorts here. I'm in there for, I'm the technology piece. And under that hat, I help the staff with their technology needs. And Ray, can you go to the next one? Under that, I did a program last year, Kids Safety Online. And I've been doing it now in the school now for about 12 years. And last year in Montana, the first time ever had all-state Kids Safety Online poster contest, and three of my students were selected as winners to go in the calendar. And they got to go to Helena. We all went together and meet with the governor, who handed them an award personally. It was a really fun and exciting time for them. We got to see the legislature in action. We got to sit up on the balcony and watch that. It was a great experience for them. We do a lot of digital literacy up at Chief Charlo, and all your librarians do that. That's part of, a big part of their job. My second graders did a project last year. The libraries also pay for some resources at the schools. We have the online World Book for Kids so that they can look up information readily. You know, they don't have to be all over Google. So this is one of the things that the libraries pay for. So the project that I did with my second graders is, we looked up a research project on birds. And we used the digital resource, the World Book for Kids. We'd used library books in the library, and they made their own bird. It's a 2D picture. It's flat, and they got to color it any way they want. They added their bird facts to the bird, and then it turns into a 3D art project is what it turns into. And I'm sorry, I forgot to bring it tonight. But I have a little video that I'd like to populate part of it for you, and you can enjoy these sweet children. This is one of the bigger projects that we do. And again, the librarians just wanted to reach out and let you know some of the things that they're doing. So periodically, you might see another librarian or two. There should have been a handout in the packets, but if you would like another handout, I have some here that talk about how school librarians transform learning. And I will leave those here, so feel free to help yourself to one of those. And thank you again so much for your time. I appreciate it greatly.
Thanks, Mary. And for those who are interested, be sure and grab some of the colored copies because they're much more interesting than our black and white ones in our folder.
I think they're pretty easy to read, too. I think they're a little bit easier to read. And I should, are there any questions? I maybe should ask that. But if not, thank you so much again for your time.
Any questions? Seeing none, well, thanks for taking your time to share all this information with us as well.
My pleasure.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to agenda item number 7A, which are student trustee reports. And so do you want to start at the far end of the table? And just because we're on TV, do you mind introducing yourselves again? I know, we all know who you are now, and we appreciate your service to the school board. But thanks.
My name is Moira Oderman. I represent Willard Alternative High School. And first thing is, this week, we have portfolios. So what portfolios are, is all the students make a kind of a presentation for their families to come in and see what they've been doing in their classes. So they take, they go class by class in Google Sites, and they represent what they've been doing in each class. That's happening on Thursday and Friday, and a little bit tomorrow, too, depending on how many teachers are booked. Yeah, it's just a really fun thing we get to do, and I really enjoy doing it, especially getting to show my families what I've been up to. We have graduation on Friday 22 at 9:30 a.m., which is really cool. I'm really glad, and I know a lot of the graduates will be graduating, and it's going to be sad to see them go, but I'm really happy that they're finally finding their way. It's almost the one-year anniversary of Willard's new building, which is crazy. It's phenomenal that we've been in there for one year already. But yeah, it's really cool. The Willard documentary class is putting out a trailer to the Kidomatic at the Kidomatic Festival at the Roxy. We're going to be putting up a trailer for our documentary that we've been working on. So I hope to see you at the Kidomatic or something. And the Willard Wire is having their, they're publishing all the articles on a website. It'll be thewillardwire.com, I think. And we'll be putting up all our articles, all our past issues, everything will be on the website. So yeah.
My name's Abe Johnson. I represent Hellgate. We've more or less settled into a routine at Hellgate. It's getting colder, and I'm happy to announce that there's a good warm temperature throughout. throughout all of Hellgate, which is, it hasn't been the case in previous years, but it is now, so. Now, fall sports have come to a close with boys soccer winning state and cross-country taking second. So we're real proud of all those athletes. In student government, we're currently working on some holiday fundraisers. And in addition to that, we're working on more cooperation between the different clubs at Hellgate. For example, Student Gov is, is now working with National Honor Society to put on a dance. I think it won't be until February, but we're going to start planning that now. And overall, we just want to promote more cooperation between the clubs at Hellgate because we have so many great clubs with involved members. Let's see. Recently, about 10 seniors met with our principal, Mr. Miller, to discuss the goals and outcomes of senior year. I mean, one of the topics was like student sections, and how to make that a more positive experience for both the administration and the students. But overall, I think it was quite productive, and it was a great way for the, the leaders of, some of the leaders of the student body to have an informal conversation with our administration. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. I'm Isaac Odegaard. Hello and good evening. I hope everyone's day has gone well so far. Now that the first quarter has passed, things are beginning to settle down at Sentinel for a bit. Many of our fall sports seasons are drawing to a close, and Sentinel is continuing to succeed into the postseason. Sentinel's football team is currently still in the running for the state title, having beaten Billings Senior 24 to 14 on Friday night. They will face Bozeman High School in Missoula this Friday. Our volleyball team is also in the running for another title this year. They recently beat Big Sky in order to advance to the state tournament in Bozeman and are scheduled to play against Billings West on Thursday. Sentinel wishes both our football and volleyball teams the best of luck in their coming competitions. The cross-country season came to a close for Sentinel on October 26th for the state meet in Great Falls. The boys placed third overall, while the girls took fifth. In speech and debate news, Sentinel, along with Hellgate High School, will be hosting a meet this weekend. Sentinel's speech and debate would like to let everyone know that they are short on judges for this upcoming meet and would welcome any judging volunteers so they can ensure that every student gets the chance to compete. The fireside dance was held on the 9th over this past weekend and helped to fundraise winter coats. The dance, which was a huge success, was sponsored by Sentinel Student Government and was attended by 500 students. In the performing arts, Sentinel's drama program is hosting their fall play on November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd at 7:30 p.m. in the Margaret Johnson Theater at Sentinel. This year's play is 26 Pebbles, which is described as "The Words and Feelings of the Residents of Newtown, Connecticut in the Aftermath of the Sandy Hook Elementary School Shooting." Tickets will be sold at the door. Also in the performing arts, Sentinel's chamber choir is currently in Great Falls, performing at the AA Choir Festival with CMR, Great Falls, and Helena High Schools. In club news, Sentinel's National Honor Society is currently holding their annual Poinsettia Drive, from which all proceeds go to Sentinel families in need and various charities. The National Honor Society is beginning to tutor students through the school year and is getting involved in the community. Coming up next month, they are volunteering at the Missoula Symphony Orchestra Concert, and at some point in the next year, will be helping to build the First Habitat for Humanity Home for a Congolese refugee family in Missoula. Lastly, construction at Sentinel is finally coming to an end. With both new common spaces unveiled and furniture arriving soon, Sentinel will at last have places to eat and gather outside of class and the lunchroom. Sentinel has had an excellent first quarter and is looking forward to the holiday season and the possible successes it will bring with it. I hope all you have a wonderful November. Thank you.
Thanks. And Big Sky?
Yes. I, neither Fiona Morrow or Isis Ball could be here, so they gave me the opportunity to be the Big Sky student representative today. The first topic is the Big Sky MTSS. And I wanted to remind us that MTSS means Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. Big Sky MTSS continues to implement the universals Be Respectful, Be Responsible, Be Resilient, Be an Eagle, through the review of classroom and campus behavioral expectations, as well as staff and office managed behavior rubric. We have recently ordered signage for all the classrooms and One Eagle Code Campus for display at the Loop entrance. This sign will be used as a visual backdrop to support and communicate our Eagle Code Campus Behavioral Expectations. Eagle Code Classroom Expectations have been printed on sturdy PVC board to display and be a referral in our classrooms. Moving forward, we will unveil and train both staff and students on our Activity and Assembly Behavioral Expectations, aligning these trainings with the beginning of our winter sports season. In addition, our Eagle Code Hallway Behavior Expectations trainings are set to align with the installation of our new hallway signage, displaying each expectation along our main hallways. This installation is scheduled to occur during winter break. Construction permitting, MTSS will continue to move forward in training all staff, students, and community on our MTSS Behavioral Expectations throughout each of our designated locations in the building. For Big Sky academics and construction, construction is right on schedule. We recently had our new clocks hung in classrooms and the hallways. Furniture has been selected for the auditorium, commons area, and new classroom spaces. It was established that one of the new classroom spaces will be a media lab, which will host the journalism, yearbook, TV, radio, film classes, and hopefully in the future, be a broadcasting studio. This week is parent-teacher conferences at Big Sky. And we use an Eagle Code Conference Form, which provides information to parents and students about things that are going well in class and things students should be working on. We also will host our first-ever family cooking class through our Title I Family Engagement Funding. We hope to have 12 parents cooking with their kids. And finally, Big Sky Clubs. We're starting an educators' club for students who are interested in becoming future educators. They will meet weekly to start brainstorm activities that they can complete. Thank you.
Is a report from Seeley Swan?
We were going to have a report from Seeley Swan, but I got the wrong number for Claire, and so, and I can't reach Eric. So we will connect with them in two weeks.
Sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank everyone for such good reports. It's always nice to have a boots-on-the-ground view of what's going on in our school. So really appreciate that you take the time to gather this information, come and present the information, and do such a good job of capturing a lot of the activities in the school, not just one component or the other. So thanks to everybody for your service. And as you know, everyone is free to go except Isaac, because Sentinel has a slightly different model, so Isaac stays to the end of the meeting, but we know you're very busy students, so feel free to leave whenever is a good moment for you to leave. So, thanks. And with that, we move on to 7B, which is the Superintendent's Report. So I was, just wanted to make sure I have the right explanation. So as you can see, Superintendent Watson is not sitting next to me. That is because he's in Washington, DC. Because, because of his status as the Montana Superintendent of the Year last year, he was invited to spend several days in Washington, DC with all the other 49 superintendents of the states in the United States. So it's a great learning experience, it's great recognition. And tonight, he was hoping to be able to be here by telephone, but tonight is, of course, a really big banquet with award ceremonies. And I got a picture of him, and he looks great in his tux. But in his stead, we'll have Pat give the Superintendent's Report.
All right. Thank you. As mentioned, this is from Dr. Watson. Dear MCPS Trustees, I apologize for my absence this evening. At this hour, I am attending a special ceremony in Washington, DC with the other 50 state superintendents of the year. It is my privilege to represent MCPS and the state of Montana in this endeavor. I appreciate the support of the Board and the entire leadership team in allowing me to participate in this special event. I will, I will be sure to share pictures upon my return. I know there are many important items on tonight's Board Agenda. I wish I could be there to provide comments and answer any questions. However, over the past few months, I have grown to appreciate the talent and work ethic of our MCPS Cabinet. I have complete confidence in their knowledge and experience, and I know they will be able to answer any questions that may come up this evening. Here are a couple of the items I wanted to report on. Thanks, Pat, for helping me with this report. First, last week, we started our school visits. We had opportunity to visit Lowell, Hawthorne, and Franklin. It was great to hear about their current initiatives and visit the various parts of their new construction. Trustees and members of the Cabinet were able to ask specific questions and interact with school staff. I found it very beneficial. We have three more school tours coming up on November 21st, starting at 8:30 a.m. Lewis &amp; Clark, Paxson, and Rattlesnake. All trustees are welcome to attend. Second, Marcia and I had a chance to tour the new boardroom, currently under construction at the old Missoula College building. The majority of the building has been gutted, and they are starting to install new interior walls. We had a chance to look at the new space and make some decisions about orientation of the room, where the board tables will sit, and where the public seating will be placed. I look forward to giving the entire Board a tour of the new building as the construction moves forward. Third, on the list of items to be completed this school year is the next phase of our strategic plan. Marcia and I have agreed to move forward with the Montana School Boards Association to help facilitate our strategic planning process. MTSBA has done this work for several communities in our state. I have confidence that they will do a great job for MCPS. We have tentatively targeted meetings in January, February, and March to do this work. Lenora will be putting out a survey to determine dates that work for the majority of the Board. In addition to the Board, we will also involve other stakeholders in the process. Cabinet, administrators, staff, students, parents, and community members. It is my hope that the Board will find the process useful in helping to frame the direction of our district for the next five to 10 years. Four, a quick congratulations to Mr. Dave Birch, auto teacher at the District Auto Program. Dave was the recent recipient of the CTE Teacher of the Year for the state of Montana. Fifth, we recently learned that our FFA team did very well at national competition, earning both individual and team awards. We also have several teams competing this weekend. Sentinel Football in the semifinals here in Missoula at 7:00 p.m. on Friday. And Big Sky, Hellgate, and Sentinel competing in the AA Speech and Debate Meet occurring at Sentinel starting Friday. Best of luck to all students competing this weekend. It's not in this item, but I'm sure Rob would have also acknowledged the Hellgate High School soccer team for their state championship, fourth in five years, which is impressive. Item six, a reminder that our next Board Meeting is November 26 at 6:00 p.m. Thanks again for allowing me to be absent this evening.
Thanks, Pat. We'll let him know you did an admirable job. So now we come to, sure.
Well, actually, so the Superintendent Report includes a list of our attendance, and it looks to me from memory like we're up quite a bit. And I wonder if, like, maybe Dave can give us just a quick overview, no specifics on any hiring we've done to, to cover the increased enrollment? I mean, I see it in the Personnel Report, but we don't really discuss that.
So you're looking at the general enrollment? We have not had to do any new hiring since the first of the year. We have hired someone's called Overflow Para's to assist, because we've had some larger numbers, but we've also leveled some students this year as well. So actually, I just ran the enrollment numbers again today at all of our elementary schools and middle schools. And we're really pretty consistent right now. We gather a few students and we lose a few students, so the numbers have actually been pretty stable.
Any other questions about the Superintendent's Report? Seeing none. Then we move on to Item Eight on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. These are items that we see on a regular basis each month that are routine and perfunctory, and therefore, the, the members of the Board will not be discussing them, although we do allow public comment as we are complying with the Open Meetings Act. And so there are three items on the Consent Agenda. One is to acknowledge the MCPS students' attendance agreements at the elementary level. One is to acknowledge the MCPS student attendance agreements at the secondary level. And the third is to ratify out-of-district attendance agreements. So these are either students who are attending MCPS from other districts, or students from MCPS who are choosing to attend other districts. I hope I didn't say that twice the wrong way. But it's some students coming into the district, some students going out of the district. And so, we won't have any discussion on it, and I'll let everyone know, since two items are elementary action items, and one is secondary, then we'll vote on the Consent Agenda. Those trustees who can only vote on secondary items will be only voting on Item Number Three on the Consent Agenda. And so, we'll be, and one and two would be for K-12. So, does that make sense to everyone? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the items on the Consent Agenda? By trustee Decker, is there a second? Second by trustee McDonald? And as I indicated, we won't have any Board discussion. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the items on the Consent Agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. Can't see if everybody's hands up. It looks like it's unanimous as, trustee Decker, is your hand up? Oh, sorry. It probably went up and down before I could look. So that is unanimous as to all K-12 trustees for Items One and Two, and unanimous as to, yes?
I think you're reading this wrong. It's, two, two and three should be secondary.
Okay. You're right. So thank you. So with that clarification, does that change anything? No, but thanks for catching that, trustee service. I did read it wrong. So that would be unanimous as to all K-12 trustees for Item One, and unanimous for all trustees as to Items Two and Three, and thank you for making that correction. So now we move on to 9A, which is Personnel Negotiations and Policy. As we have been discussing over the course of several meetings, with the advice of legal counsel, we have been looking through our policies to make sure they're in compliance with state law and actually some federal changes that have been recognized as well. And so we're going to be seeing a lot of approvals and first readings of Board policies in order to get our policies all in alignment with what state and federal law requires, for the most part. And so, the A1 is to approve the second reading of Board Policy 8525, Use of District Names, Logos, Symbols, and Motos. And it's attached on Page 31. And as a bit of an explanation behind Page 31, which is the actual policy, there are some pages which describe the procedures which will be in place to implement that policy. The Board does not approve of procedures. That is something done at the administrative level so that it can be carried out at a much more efficient way than the manner in which we have to approve Board Policy. But we, Dr. Watson, I thought it would be very helpful for you to see the procedures that will support the Board Policy. And I know that Hatton has been instrumental in that, so she's also available. And so Hatton, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add?
Thank you, trustee Holland. There's nothing I really want to add, except for that I am available for questions, and I want to re-articulate what we discussed when we had the first reading of this policy, is that this policy is not exceptionally intended for athletic uniforms for teams. So when our vendors get orders that come via a purchase order from a school district employee, they don't necessarily need an additional piece of paperwork that says, yes, you have the approval to print athletic uniform that has the logo of your school on it. This policy and this procedure is, is much more intended for the printing of items that happen often by community members, parents, PTA, booster clubs, and sometimes even organizations that have no connection to the school district at all, who go out and want to print the names of our schools and their logos on items as if they represent something connected with the school district. We would now assert that they need to have the approval form in place before they can do that.
Any questions for Hatton? Trustee Smith?
I guess this is just, on, on some outside entity that is not associated with the school, is it essentially a permission? On some outside entity that is not associated with the school, is it essentially a permission that they would be asking for? So if we do approve their request, then we are granting them permission to use these things? And do we... Is the administration... Am I putting the cart in front of the horse here and asking this question? Is it going to be our typical practice to not allow that if there is no connection with the school? I guess it's part of the intention is to protect our brand, so to say.
Yes, the intention is to protect our brand, but the intention is also to allow it for those practices that are quite common, like PTAs and booster clubs. And even when a parent who's especially interested... Let me give you a good example. Sentinel Volleyball made it to state, and a parent connected with that team just this evening, in fact, while I was at the vendor's store, was printing some sweatshirts, which is great. Now we would request that there be a permission form accompanying that order, so that it's a member of the school's administration has granted approval for that, so that we can track and maintain integrity and a little bit more formality with regard to the use of our school logos and trademarks. When it comes to organizations that do have nothing to do with the school district, they are independent nonprofits, or maybe they don't even have nonprofit status, but they're just separate organizations or clubs, in those instances, our intent would be to not grant permission. Does that help clarify? Thanks for letting me borrow your mic.
You are the only ones with the power. Would you guys mind if I just try to...
We're on now. This one works.
Oh, now this works.
Mine doesn't.
Oh, there it is.
Now mine does.
This one's working. This works now.
We're good at sharing.
This one works. Yes, you just remember it. You've had people stall before you.
Our students have to suffer.
Worth every...
Rocking in the treetops.
I can't see what's beyond just this.
Well, it starts here. The next one that'll work is somewhere right here.
Yeah, it's between A and B.
This one's back on.
I know it's gonna be really wacky, but maybe we should just work towards the priorities and getting the point towards...
This one works.
There are two that work right now.
The red, the red and the letter.
Um, trustee Holland, if you're approval, would you consider you would be in charge in the meeting when it needs to functional mic?
My... His work. My work.
I am now in charge.
Nope, I'm in charge. Because I've got the pink button too, which means I have priority. But Isaac, do you have any...
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I saw here that it says not permitted would be social media accounts that are not managed by a school-sponsored club sport or activity. And I know just as an example, Sentinel has an account called Sentinel Students Section. I'm not exactly sure who is the manager of the account, but it's not really affiliated with anything. It's just an announcement account. Would that have to be disabled through these rules?
One of the challenges has been our student anonymous social media accounts, and what we've tried to do is not have an exceptionally heavy hand with those accounts, provided that they're managed in the spirit of the school name in a positive way that reflects the school's values and what we'd like to see students uphold. Sentinel, I can say, is always an exceptional example of that. However, the student accounts that are anonymous, like that student account, can be very problematic, and this policy would prohibit students from doing those, and we would use it as an example of where they're not following policy and administrative procedure in order to convince them to discontinue their use. We usually try to treat it as a learning experience, though, so when we see examples of student social media activity that includes an account connected to our school name and our school logo, as if it's representing the school, and it clearly doesn't, in the sense that it includes depictions of sexual activity, vulgar language, threatening language, or unsportsmanlike conduct, usually, if we can find out what students are connected to that account, we treat it as a learning experience, to sit down with them and say, this isn't how we're gonna conduct ourselves. Again, the Sentinel student account has been exceptional as an example of that, but it is a very problematic area for our school district, because students tend to name them on behalf of the school, as if they represent the school, and they don't. They do represent the student voice, but we would not want to see our school name connected with some of the content posted on those anonymous accounts. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And we'll treat this as a learning curve, too. Trustee Decker?
Yes. Just a quick question. I know a couple of the schools that I've been involved with have kind of multiple visuals that are used at the school, on, you know, hats, sweatshirts, whatever, and I'm... This is making me wonder if there is... If there's an official process, because I don't see it in here for designating official school stuff versus unofficial but widely-used school stuff. The Lowell Old School logo comes to mind as an example of that. Thank you. So these draft versions of approval forms are drafts. In fact, the Big Sky page, on the high school page, you'll notice Big Sky is missing a few logos that we need to add. What we did was we asked the schools to provide us the logos that are in use, so that we could make sure these forms are comprehensive. I would suggest that in the case of the example you highlighted, we would add the Lowell Old School, because it is used so widely. There was a very good question asked by the board when we had first reading of this policy about how we might more formally approve logos and go through processes for creating those logos. And at this point, with the resources that we have in place, I would suggest that that's not practical for our school district. And I think that most of the logo efforts are teacher and administrator and student-led, so there is an inherent oversight part of that, so we don't get logos that are inappropriate. One of the vendors that I spoke with about these procedures did ask, as a matter of practicality, would they... Because vendors not only get official orders, like from a coach, or athletic director, or a PTA, or a booster club member, that's quite official, or the example of this Sentinel sweatshirt order, a parent making an order of 30 or 50 sweatshirts. They also have retail business, where people just come in and say, I want to buy one T-shirt that says Sentinel on it. So each year, those vendors will need a process of receiving the logos, which the district would consider approved for the purpose of those individual retail orders.
Any other questions? Trustee Service? So what do you do if someone's not... Are there any teeth to this, I guess, if the question...
Yeah, that's a great question. So our legal counsel is not here tonight, but they supported us last spring with some letters that Superintendent Thane, when he was still in his role, sent to a variety of organizations in the community who do use our school names and logos without permission, and it's created some really problematic circumstances for us, largely because they host sports teams that people, parents, and community members assume are our sports teams, and they don't follow our procedures and practices. So there's some degree of liability for us. So those letters that were sent last spring had the words cease and desist in them. I think the teeth and the next step, if people don't honor it, if it's an individual printing one T-shirt, we would probably let them know they're out of keeping with our context and say, please don't do that again. But if it's more global, like an actual organization, a nonprofit, a team, who continues to not honor our cease and desist request, then I think we would exercise our rights through the legal process and use our attorneys to move on to the next steps. But without them here, I don't want to discuss what those next steps are. I feel like that's for our legal counsel to say.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Yep. It's the pattern of the night, I guess. So the recommendation is that the trustees adopt Board Policy 8525, which is captured Use of District Names, Logos, Symbols, and Motos. Is there a motion to adopt Board Policy 8525? Moved by trustee Lorenson, is there a second? Second by trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Other than I want to thank you for being here, Hatton, and providing such a great thorough explanation for both how the bigger picture looks and then how the details are going to work as well. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting Board Policy 8525, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. We move on to two, which is to approve on second reading Board Policy 1111, Election of Trustees. And this went out for public comment, and it has been presented by... At a first reading, no public comment has been received. The recommendation is to adopt Board Policy 1111. Are there any questions about it first? We did talk about this when Megan Morse was at our last meeting, so she was available for questions on this. Is there a motion from a trustee to adopt Board Policy 1111 on the election of trustees? Moved by trustee Decker, is there a second? Second by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of adopting Board Policy 1111, please indicate by raising your hand. That is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to three, which is 1112, which allows... Which addresses resignation of trustees. There was a bit of a glitch in there where there was a waiting period, so to speak, in terms of accepting the resignation, and it was recommended by board counsel to make a modification to that. It's been sent... Set out for public... Posted for public comment, and no public comment has been received. And the recommendation is that Board Policy 1112 be adopted. Are there any questions first? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adopt Board Policy 1112? Moved by trustee Decker, is there a second? Second by trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting Board Policy 1112, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to second reading of Board Policy 2320, Field Trips, Excursions, and Outdoor Education. And as was explained at the first reading, this was modified because it's been not infrequent that some organization will qualify for an event that would have them be able to travel to a competition out of state, typically in Canada, and... But they can't comply with the six-month request, and so this was adding language in that upon the discretion of the superintendent's designation, then the board can approve something where there isn't a six-month requirement. And then, as we saw last week, that there are requests coming in for... In case they qualify for something. So we're actually getting the requests in in more timely fashion, but this does allow for those exceptional circumstances. Is there any questions based on that reminder of the earlier discussion? Seeing none, then is there... The recommendation is to adopt Board Policy 2320, Addressing Field Trips, Excursions, and Outdoor Education. Is there a motion to adopt this board policy? Moved by trustee Lorenson, is there a second? Second by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting Board Policy 2320, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we come on to second reading of Board Policy 5220, which is prohibiting... Prohibition on aiding and abetting sexual abuse, which was presented by board counsel as something that is necessary given current legislation. And so it was already sent out for public comment, no public comment was received, so the recommendation is that the trustees adopt Board Policy 5220. Are there any questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion to adopt Board Policy 5220? Moved by trustee Service, and second by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all those in favor of adopting Board Policy 5220, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to B1, which is a discussion about the future lease of the current administration building on Sixth Street. And so, Pat, I know you and the committee have been working on this. Tonight is being presented as an information-only item to give some notice to the public, and then we will be considering action at a later date.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to thank the committee that's been helping me with this review, and trustees Smith and Lorenson, Burley McWilliams, and Superintendent Watson. As mentioned, this attached RFP, which begins on page 42, is the draft form of the RFP that we would ask the board to approve when we meet on the 26th. Attached to the RFP is a diagram of the administration building, along with the proposed lease that would also go out with the RFP. A couple of items I'll just point out. First, on page 43, the proposed opening of this... First, on page 43, the proposed opening of this, of responses to this RFP is May 5th. So what we're allowing is plenty of opportunity for proposers to, to prepare and their proposal and their plan, to review the property and to make a quality submittal, hopefully a quality submittal. So there's quite a bit of opportunity to develop that, that plan. The, page 44 outlines some of the requirements. Under Article 1, the last paragraph, we reference the expectation and the reservation of the MCPS right to select a proposer, a future tenant that best fits the objectives of MCPS, including compatible use, longevity, economic benefit, and asset preservation. Article 2, property description. We're talking about two buildings here. The 1897 building is the original building that was used as a school till 1954. It's about 29,000 square feet. The other building is the print shop and warehouse. And later in the RFP, what we're giving proposers an opportunity to do is submit to lease just the original building or both buildings and leave the school district the opportunity to make a decision to, to keep the print shop warehouse for a period of time. So we would negotiate the potential retention of that, of that building for our use for a period of time, primarily for storage and equipment. The, page 45, there's some planned site inspections. You'll see there's some scheduled and then also the, the direction to schedule site examinations on weekends. We've seen with, with the Cold Springs building, with the Home Vale property across the street, that the folks looking at those properties spend quite a bit of time and reviewing and examining the property, which we want them to do. And so the, the preference for us would be that that review would take place on weekends, and we would accommodate that through our, through Burley's office and our security staff. You'll see on page 46, the reference to multiple proposals, and, and that just preserves some flexibility for the district to examine those proposals. The, a number of the provisions will also be reflected in the lease, including the lease preparation and modification of the site on page 47. That means that the lease document itself will expect that the tenant work with the district to develop the improvements, to obtain approval of the improvements. Also, the maintenance of the facility would be in compliance with district standards. So the lease terms that you saw with the Cold Springs lease are going to be reflected again in this document. I think that was sort of the extent of the items that I was wanting to identify. You'll see the, page 51, contemplates an oral presentation if necessary. We had put that in play with, with other submittals, and then the scoring is on page 51. Page 53 is a diagram of the, of the building, including the, the print shop and the warehouse, which are, if you're looking at that document, it's, to the, to the right, it juts out as a big open space or big space. The, the lease document begins on page 54, and really, I hadn't planned to go through that document. It's, it's right in line with our Cold Springs lease. It's, it's a triple net lease, meaning that the tenant would be obligated on the, for the space they lease on, all the utilities, taxes, and other obligations, taxes if any. That's, that's all I had to go over. Is there any questions?
Are there any questions? As I indicated, this is information only at this meeting, and we'll be seeing it again as an action item at the next board meeting. Any questions? Seeing none. Then any public comment, even though it's information only? Seeing none. Well, thanks for that summary, Pat, and thank you for drafting the lease.
You bet.
So we move on to 10A1, which is to approve a grant application summary. Julie, it's from Sentinel High School teacher.
One at a time. Yes, this is yet to be applied for. Seeking board approval for additional science equipment and professional development. $9,000 in total, $7,000 for equipment for biology and earth science. You can see the standards it's aligned to, and teaching in a more up-to-date manner, and professional development to go along with it.
Any questions for Julie? Trustee Smith?
Well, it works. Julie, I just noticed it says it's a supplemental grant application. Was there already one that, is this supplemental to one that we already asked for, or? It says, see attached grant application and paperwork, and those may have been left out. I'm not sure. I guess just, if you could just explain what that means.
I believe it means in addition to what the, the general fund already provides. I don't believe that they, or I think maybe they have applied for a grant in the past. I could, do you know the lease?
I haven't been contacted.
Yeah, I don't know. Oh, Pat knows.
It's, that's exactly what it is. It's supplemental to funding that's otherwise available. So this is the original application. And Lindsay, it provided so much information in the description, I suggested she keep out the application, so that was missing. Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none. The recommendation is that the trustees approve the grant application summary. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Service and second by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving the grant application summary filed beginning on page 67, please indicate by raising your hand. That's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we come to the first of two out-of-country travel requests. The first comes from Sealy Swan, and Julie, it looks like this is their every-other-year trip?
Correct. Oh, and we're just within the six-month timeline. This is scheduled for April. It is their every-other-year trip to South America. They're going to Costa Rica. They will, the students will miss school, but you can read in the narrative that because Sealy is a smaller high school, the kids all have to make prior arrangements with all of their content area teachers to make sure that they either have assignments with them while they're traveling or have everything done in advance, so.
Any questions? Seeing none. Then is there, the recommendation is to approve the out-of-country travel for Sealy Swan. Is there's a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Dugger and second by trustee Decker. Too many Bs. So any board discussion? I will comment that when we have been in Sealy for one of our two meetings, we usually hear from the students on the ears that they've been there, and it really is a great benefit to them. And the students who do the presentations really can explain how valuable experience was to them, especially, I think, being in a smaller school, that the learning experience is really valued. So any other comments in light of that? Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all those in favor of approving the out-of-country travel, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we come to another request, and as you'll note, this is coming to us quite early. This is for travel in 2021, but I'm guessing the teacher wants an opportunity, because of the breadth of the travel, to fundraise as much as the students and the staff can. So Julie, do you want to add information to what's in the packet?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. So this comes from Jenna Burke, who's a social studies teacher at Sentinel. They're combining London, Paris, and Rome. Quite a, like you said, quite an extensive trip, but it's, you'll see that it's occurring after school is out. Well, I think, Dave. Is that after school is out? I hope so. In June of 2021. But it is quite an expensive trip, but it's through an agency that we've used in the past in the district, and the students will need quite a lot of time to fundraise for it.
Oh, now it's working. Okay, somehow that. There's some interesting thing going on. So I think I was at the point of, are there any questions? I have one question. I know that Superintendent Watson and I talked about the fact that there might be some students who would be graduated that still want to go on the trip, and so that they won't technically be MCPS students anymore. So we were talking about whether they would be considered like junior chaperones instead of students at that point, or what category they should fall in. So we might need to talk to legal counsel just about that aspect of it, in terms of, do we have to limit it to students who would still be students of MCPS? Because that's one thing that was of some concern.
Thank you for bringing that up. I hadn't thought about that. I will let Ms. Burke know that that's a factor that's under consideration.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Then the recommendation is that the trustees approve the out-of-country travel requests made by Jenna Burke for Sentinel High School students. Is there such a motion to approve the out-of-country travel request? Moved by trustee Service. Is there a second? Second by trustee Dugger. Is there any board discussion? Sounds like, I want to go on the trip. Sounds like really good. So any other comments? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of approving the out-of-country travel requests submitted by Ms. Burke, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And now we come to another lease, only this one. The recommendation is that we approve this new lease agreement with the city, and as you know, we had a presentation at the last board meeting about some of the concepts involved, but you were working out the details of the lease. So, Pat, if you want to.
Yeah, thank you. So the, the document begins on page 79, and it reflects some collaborative work with Parks and Recreation folks in our office and the city attorney's office and our attorney's office. So this document's intended to be a replacement of the existing lease agreement for the Westside Park Playground, and the, the new lease would extend the term by five years. It's to capture the Westside Park master plan that Nate MacLeod and Heidi West talked about at the last meeting, and is sort of the springboard to some of the fundraising efforts that they want to undertake to, to fund the improvements to that, to that park. And so it's pretty exciting stuff. The contribution from the school district would come from bond proceeds. So that was mentioned at the last meeting, the $100,000 investment in the, the school playground, but I don't know that we made it clear that was from bond proceeds. So that's where those funds would come from. The, the lease, beginning on page 79, there's really just a couple of items I was going to highlight. The, the document is similar to the, the existing document with, with some modifications. Some of the modifications are reflected in the recitals. I think the, the last recital on page 79 really captures the intent of the parties, and that's to enter a new lease agreement that reflects continued cooperation in the use and management of Westside Park for safety, security, and benefit of Lowell students, neighborhood residents, and the community is aligned in this agreement. And, and that really captures what, what we're intending to do, is to, to focus on safety, focus on kids' opportunities to use that, that park, kids and community. So the, the attachment is to the, to the lease, the exhibit, page 91, is, identifies the Westside Park master plan. This is something that Nate went through last time we met, and you can, you can see the school, and, and then to the east, the, the multi-purpose court, and then the playground further east with the new equipment that Nate talked about. This is the conceptual master plan that's referenced in the, in the lease agreement itself. If you then look on page 92, it's, it's a black and white, so you've got to bear with it a little bit, but there's a blue outline that's, that's marked. It's not blue on your copy, but it's this triangle piece that captures the exclusive use area for the, the school during the school day. And, and that's referenced in the lease and is intended to provide some safe play areas and fenced play area for, for students during the, the school day and shortly after school as they depart for home, or students depart for home. So a lot of Section 3 really addresses that, that concept of both the exclusive use area and then the rights of the school to reserve the full park for school-related activities beyond the school hours, and how that, how that would happen in, in concert with Parks and Recs reservation model and, and planning model. So they have an online reservation system, and then the school would have some, some bumping rights, provided they provide adequate notice. The improvements are addressed on Section 4, and really contemplate mutual collaborative effort between the school and the Parks Department.